Yes, Mr Willis, I can tell you that we have completed your reading.
I'm very grateful, my lord, that, I hope, will save me some time and my learned friends. May I introduce them, please? I appear on behalf of the appellant together with my learned friend, Mrs. Talbot. My learned friend, Mrs. Townsend, appears with Dr. Alex Williams on behalf of the county council. My learned friend, Mr. Elvin QC, and Mr. Fraser, his junior representative, the second respondent, Horse Hill Developments Limited. Mr. Mulls sits in the next row, appears on behalf of the third respondent, the Secretary of State.
Yes.
And to my left, Mr. Brown QC and his junior, Miss Pendham, who represent the intervenor here as observers. And you'll have seen, or read, I'm sure, their written submissions.
Yes, indeed.
And the appellant gratefully endorses those submissions. Turning then to the paperwork, your lordship should have the core bundle, the supplementary bundle, the authorities bundle.
Yeah, I've got two volumes of core bundle.
Yes, thank you. The supplementary bundle, my lord, is a bundle of evidence.
Yeah.
Including an agreed statement of facts. And then, my lord, there should also be... I think that covers the documents that we've handed up to your lordship. You may have on your desk...
There's something called Environmental Impact Assessment, looks like a government...
It is, my lord, it's the government's advice on environmental impact assessment. And we haven't unfortunately included in the bundle of authorities, we apologize for that, but I'm going to take you to it, I'm sure it'll be familiar to some of the bench in any event, but on the purpose of the EIA.
Sorry, 13th of May 2020. I'm just reading from what...
Last updated, my lord, yes.
Yeah, so that's the effective date of this document.
And it's current, I'm told, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ah, yes, my learned friend, Mrs. Townsend, would like me to hand up as well the section which we omitted by mistake from the Climate Change Act provisions.
Yeah.
Section 14 of the Climate Change Act, I'm afraid was not included. If I can hand three copies.
That will go in tab three, Willis.
Yes, it will, my lord. I don't think that is whole punch, my lord. It would fit snugly between AB 62 and AB 63.
My fault, I apologize.
Sorry?
My fault, I apologize.
Don't worry. So what we have to construe is the indirect effects of a project.
My lord, yes, that's about it. My learned friend, Mr. Brown QC, in his written submissions, opening submission, said that it is in effect a rather simple point, but obviously an important one nevertheless.
Well, it's simple to express, it's not quite so simple to answer.
Exactly. And we have Mr. Justice Holgate's considered view on the matter, and that is what we'll need to...
Yes.
Need to address. But before we do, can I just indicate that as far as the advocacy on behalf of the appellant is concerned, I will address your lordship in introduction, but also on grounds of Little Roman 1 and 2, and my learned junior will introduce and address grounds Roman 3 and 4.
And you divided up the time...
We divided up the time as best we could, but obviously subject to your lordship.
Yes, of course.
I think it's right to say we are only listed for a day and a half.
Indeed, that's correct.
And we've worked, we've provided, working to that time scale, we've suggested, and I think it's agreed, subject to perhaps an element of flexibility, between council and before your lordships, that the appellant has until 2:30 this afternoon, the county council between 2:30 and 4:30 to respond. Tomorrow morning, the developer, Horse Hill, has 10:30 to 11:30, the Secretary of State, 11:32, 12:15, and the appellant replies between 12:15 and 1:00 p.m. If that all works to plan, we'll be finished by lunchtime tomorrow.
Right. If I may say so, there's quite a lot of overlap in the written submissions, which we don't want to have repeated.
No, I understand, my lord. And I was intending to concentrate on my learned friend, Mrs. Townsend's skeleton argument, as it were, when I come to address the arguments. I'm not suggesting one minute that the other arguments aren't valid or put in an appropriate way, but it's supposed to be that we can avoid overlap that way. Right. So, my lord, can I set the context first, please? This appeal is being heard just days after the closing of COP26, and as all the delegates make their way home, having been reminded of the danger that the citizens of the planet face arising from uncontrolled burning of fossil fuels. Those dangers were spelt out once again by the IPCC in the Code Red Report issued in August, where they set out the unequivocal science of human-driven increase in greenhouse gas emissions through the burning of fossil fuels. And they concluded that the climate we experience in the future depends on our decisions now. Dangerous climate change represents a great threat to humanity and biodiversity. As a consequence of climate change, temperatures will continue to rise with an increase in droughts, heat waves and wildfires. Sea levels will continue to rise, precipitation patterns will change and intensify with greater risk of flooding. Hurricanes and cyclones are likely to become stronger and more intense, and the impacts are already being felt across the globe. Those dangers have been recognized on a number of occasions by domestic courts, for example in the case of Spuria and others against the Secretary of State for Transport in 2020. And although we haven't included the authority in the bundle, if I can just read one paragraph, my lord, paragraph 559 of the Divisional Court's judgment, a court made up of Lord Justice Hickenbottom and Mr. Justice Holgate. Recognizing the impact of greenhouse gases on climate change, the court said, "The concentration of greenhouse gases in the earth atmosphere is directly linked to average global temperatures. The concentration of greenhouse gases has been rising steadily, and with it mean global temperatures, since the start of the Industrial Revolution." And they said, "The most abundant greenhouse gas accounting for at least two-thirds of all greenhouse gases is CO2, which is largely the product of burning fossil fuels. The increasing global temperature has resulted in, amongst other things, sea level change, a decline in glaciers, the Antarctic ice sheet, Antarctic sea ice, alterations to various ecosystems, and in some areas, a threat to food and water supplies. It is," they said, "potentially catastrophic." Turning now then, having given you that outline in terms of the context against which this appeal is, or in which this appeal is being determined, to the factual background and the decision of Surrey County Council. We provided a chronology in the bundle, but in short, it seems clear that the second respondent, represented by Mr. Elvin QC, wanted to move to the production of oil at the site in Horse Hill, Surrey, and requested that Surrey County Council issue the scoping opinion. The county council did that in October of 2018, and recommended in the scoping opinion that the Environmental Impact Assessment, EIA, include the assessment of greenhouse gas emissions arising from the combustion of the oil produced, that's downstream or scope 3 emissions. And you'll see that from paragraph 3.14 of the scoping opinion, indeed you've got the point already, my lord.
You didn't challenge the judge's conclusion that it wasn't compulsory to follow the scoping opinion.
Yes, and we don't pursue that argument, in fact, we didn't pursue it very strongly if at all in the court below. And the language doesn't seem to bear outer challenge on that basis.
Yeah.
At least, that's my opinion, I'm not sure about my learned friend, he sits behind me. When assessing the likely significant effects of the development, the developer's second respondent decided not to follow the scoping opinion, and gave its reasons in paragraphs 11, 121 and 122 of the environmental statement, referring to the essential character of the development, the fact that those emissions would be out with the control of the developer, and also referred to other regimes, albeit not specifying what those regimes might be for the assessment or regulation of those emissions.
Mr. Willis, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's probably useful at some point soon, if not now, to identify the description of development, which I think is simply an agreed matter of fact, but if one finds it, for example, in the committee report supplementary bundle 41.
The agreed statement of facts is that 114 and developments identified in paragraph 4, but going back to the office report...
Yeah, I think we've got the planning permission itself in 41826.
We do. It's important to think, isn't it, to have in mind as we go forward, what the application was actually for and what the planning permission, granted permission for, as described there.
Yes. Well, we have at the top of the summary report in bold, the description beginning with the words retention, extension of the existing well site, and that is, I assume, my lord, the paragraph that you...
It is.
Were referring to, thank you.
But as my lord says, we actually have the planning permission.
We do, my lord, I think at the back of the...
Tab 26.
Thank you. Okay, so you'll appreciate, my lord, is that Mr. Justice Holgate focused on the development itself, and in doing so, inappropriately restricted the ambit of the EIA and the assessment of indirect effects.
Well, I don't recall he actually ever referred to the description of development in the planning permission.
Well, no, your lordship will be right. He referred to, he used the term the development itself, but didn't necessarily, I don't think he actually identified...
What he meant by that.
What he meant by that in that context, it was more of a general, the true legal test, in effect, is how he described it. Back if I may to the chronology, the county council accepted that the ES or environmental statement was sufficient, and that the reasons given for scoping out or not assessing the downstream emissions were adequate and proportionate. The evidence filed in the court below, ex post facto, from Dr. Solder, who in fact was the author of the scoping opinion and the environmental statement review, explained her reasoning further. And we might come back to that, my lord, particularly when we deal with ground 14. In other words, the question of whether or not the county council went wrong when accepting the developer's reasons. Those are matters which I'm going to try and leave to Mr. Holm.
Is Dr. Solder's report part of the decision process itself?
The...
What's the provenance of that document, and how does it bear on the decision to grant planning permission?
Well, it doesn't get a mention in the officer's report. It wasn't subject to public consultation, and so none of the public were aware of the, as it were, the reasoning that led to the county council accepting the extent and the ambit of the environmental statement. You'll see that in the officer's report, my lord, which we were looking at, SB 41.
Yes.
Environmental impact certainly gets a mention, it begins at page SB 50 and runs through from paragraph 92 to 101, but there's no reference to the ES review. And in 97, that's the key paragraph of that section, you'll see the heading greenhouse gas emissions and the climate. And although it all ought to be read, what is said five lines down is on balance, "Having taken into account the information and evidence submitted by all parties with an interest in the determination of the current planning application, the CPA has concluded that the proposed development would not give rise to significant impacts on the climate as a consequence of the emissions of greenhouse gases directly attributable," I emphasize, "to the implementation and operation of the scheme." And I suppose the words "directly attributable" reflect the content of the ES report insofar as it addressed greenhouse gas emissions, because it only addressed scope 1 emissions, those which are directly attributable to the development on site.
Do you say that was too narrow a question? It should have considered both direct and indirect.
Exactly, my lord, exactly, and should have, and that would include, in the context of fossil fuel development, downstream emissions from those who burn the product. And although it may be something that we'll need to come back to, the fact that it's refined, that it goes through a refinement process, it does not break the chain, it does not undermine that proposition.
Well, it does not undermine the proposition that this is an indirect effect.
My lord, yes, much better way of putting it, but yeah.
Well, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Can I just raise something now which comes at a tangent, but I think it's probably sensible to raise it early on. It's occurred to me to wonder whether, and I'm not saying that this touches the ground of appeal, but it's a question perhaps that needs just to be thought about. One could say that such and such an effect was not properly to be regarded as an indirect effect, and therefore it was beyond the scope of EIA, but that it was nevertheless material planning consideration for the purposes of considering the application itself, notwithstanding that it wouldn't have featured in the ES.
Yes.
Was that concept explored at all in the court below?
We're going to explore it here, but I'm not sure...
But it's not part of the challenge, is it, at this point?
No, I think this will, this point will arise when we address the question of the practicalities of the decision taken by Mr. Justice Holgate. Because if you have a, as I think everybody before your lordship agree, a factor like climate change, which is a relevant material consideration, then to deny the decision-maker the fullest possible picture as to the pros and cons of that factor would be counterproductive.
Yeah. What I'm really getting at perhaps, is, or part of what I'm getting at, is that, of course, the challenge is to the grant of planning permission, it's not a challenge to the ES...
No.
Or to the EIA, of which the ES was a component. Well, I'll just leave the thought there, if I may, I'll leave the thought lying where it does, but it's a point that's not troubled me, but interested me.
Yes, well, we will certainly address it, my lord, and we will look to see whether or not the matter is reflected in the judgment. I can't at the moment recollect how far we took the point.
I don't think it was, presumably because it wasn't argued.
No.
My lord, it is reflected to some degree, if you look, if I could just forget judgment, paragraphs 83 through 89.
83.
83 through 89.
Thank you.
I'm very grateful.
Well, I just wondered, subject to my lord, of course, I've thrown the point at you, breaking into your argument. I, for my part, would be entirely content for you to reflect on the question I've raised and come back to it perhaps later on.
Thank you, my lord, I think we'll do that when we address you on the pragmatic application of the approach that we advance. So, my lord, while we have the supplementary bundle open at page SB 50, I wonder if I can just turn, ask you to turn at the back of that bundle, the agreed statement of facts. And...
Sorry, which bundle?
The supplementary, same bundle, my lord, but at the back of the bundle.
Back of the bundle, request for reconsideration.
SB 113.
113.
Thank you, my lord.
Yes.
Thank you. It's worth remembering throughout this, that this appeal, that it was agreed between the parties, paragraphs 8 and 9, that the oil produced by the development cannot be used at all until a process of refinement has taken place, and that it is likely to be used predominantly in the transportation sector, with some use also for heat manufacturing in the petrochemical industry. The amount of oil to be produced over the lifetime of the development is not known, but the development could in theory produce a total of up to 3,000, 3,306,547 tonnes of crude oil over the 20-year production period. And then in paragraph 9, the point is made and agreed that the planning application itself leaves open the question of where the extracted crude oil will go when it's exported from the site and sold to the wider hydrocarbon market. It's likely the oil will be sold on to refineries for processing. It's not possible to know where a unit of produced oil will be refined or subsequently used. It may be refined and subsequently used in the United Kingdom, or exported overseas where it will be refined and used. Alternatively, a given unit of oil may be refined abroad and then imported back to the UK. Now, that set of facts which were agreed, rather jars with the approach taken by the officer writing the report to the committee, who addressed the need for hydrocarbon supply at page SB 56, paragraph 137, through to paragraph 162. And the conclusions on needs are set out at page SB 59, 159 to 162. And you'll see in paragraph 162, "Having identified the need to maximize indigenous oil and gas reserves, both onshore and offshore," paragraph 160, which he said officers were required to give significant weight to, that the officers concluded that on the basis of the government advice, there is a national need for the development, subject to the proposal satisfying other national policies and the policies of the development plan. This is considered further under individual issues later in the report. The officers were advising the committee that there was a national need for oil production, the exploitation of indigenous supplies, when the fact is that in this case, everybody, including the developer and the county council, now agree that there is no way of knowing where this oil might end up, where it might be refined, or where it might be used. Now, you're appreciated, my lord, sir. That wasn't a point of challenge in the court below, and it doesn't feature as a ground of appeal, or could it really, without having been raised in the court below? But it's a rather troubling part of the process, nevertheless, you may think. And the fact that the oil may be refined and then subsequently burnt anywhere in the world, I think colorfully described by Mr. Brown QC in his skeleton argument as being perhaps burnt by an SUV in Chelsea or in China, makes no difference in terms of the impact on global warming. Doesn't matter where fossil fuels are burnt, ultimately they will emit greenhouse gases into the atmosphere which will contribute to the climate emergency that we face. I'll say no more about the officer's report. I've been through the whole of the report, we only have, I think, an element of it here, there is no other reference to the possibility, or even, or perhaps probability, that this oil may be burnt outside of the UK. Can I then please turn to the relevant statutory framework? And we addressed this in a skeleton argument, my lord, but everybody's addressed it, and I don't think there's any argument about the framework itself.
No, you agree what it is, not just not what it means.
Exactly, my lord. We've gone to the trouble of not just indicating that we agree with the way that Mr. Justice Holgate set it out, but setting out in a skeleton argument, so I'll just identify perhaps very quickly, if I may, with reference to the bundle of authorities, the key elements.
Are you going to, in this exercise, are you going to identify salient principles to emerge from the authorities? Is that the exercise you're doing now?
Yes, my lord, my first port of call would be the EIA directive and regulations, then the case law, which identifies the purpose and the principles.
You're going to take us to the authorities where they illuminate this concept of indirect effects of the development?
I will be doing that too, my lord, so that we'll have reference to your lordship's decision in CAT, there is a, your lordship's decision in the Frackman case, there are the, again, your lordship's decision in...
Right, sorry, this is not the march past of my previous judgments. I simply want to understand what you're going to be doing, because it would help me certainly to gather in my own mind at this point what you say are the salient and supporting principles from your argument.
My lord, yes, well, I will endeavor to do that as swiftly as I can, and a whistle-stocker of the directive and the regulation, I think, may assist. and the regulation, I think, may assist. So, my lord, if we have.
I think you can take the text of the regulation or the directive fairly shortly, because, and I say, it's repeated, I think, in everybody's argument. So we've read it, and then judge's judgment, so I think we've read it five or six times.
Yes.
Time to get to this point.
My lord, I agree. Well, let's, perhaps, taking it as swiftly as we can, with one finger on the appellate skeleton argument, CB two.
Yep.
Page sixteen is where it begins. There's reference there to Article two, one of the EIA directive, and we see the recitals which were, in paragraph seventeen, which were inserted when the EIA directive was amended to include reference to climate change
Yes.
and the reasons behind that. We know what information, environmental information means, because it's defined in Regulation two-one, and there is a prohibition on the grant of planning permission under Regulation three if EIA has not been carried out. And now Regulation four, defining environmental impact assessment as a process which involves the preparation of the environmental statement, public consultation, and consideration under Regulation twenty-six. One can see from Regulation four-two the wording, the EIA must identify, describe, and assess in an appropriate manner, in light of each individual case, so each case must be decided on its own particular circumstances and facts, the direct and indirect significant effects of the proposed development on the following factors, and one of those, little c, is land, soil, water, oil, and climate. There is, in paragraph twenty-two, a discussion about the phrase proposed development and the phrase used in the directive, project, and project is defined in Article one-two A in two different ways, either execution of construction works or other installation schemes, and alternatively, other interventions in the natural surroundings and landscape, including involving, involving, those involving the extraction of mineral resources. That's what we're dealing with in this instance. Now, in paragraph twenty-three, we jump to Schedule four of the EIA regulations, which goes into more depth as to the likely significant effects that ought to be described. But there is a precursor to that, and it's to be found in Regulation eighteen. And again, Regulation eighteen is rehearsed in a number of my only friends' skeleton arguments. But can I just draw your attention to it at page AB forty-seven of the bundle of authorities? And it's really eighteen-three and four that I'd just like to identify as being relevant, because in eighteen-three, at AB forty-eight, an environmental statement is a statement which includes at least, and then F, you see the reference to any additional information specified in Schedule four, which we're going to turn to in a minute, and then the words relevant to the specific characteristics of the particular development, and then, I would suggest, importantly, or type of development, and to the environmental features likely to be significantly affected. Now, here we are dealing with a particular type of development, fossil fuel production. And I'd suggest that type of development is perhaps relevant as a form of words in three F, because it's, that paragraph takes us to Schedule four, and we know that Schedule four, paragraph five, identifies a sort of indirect transboundary cumulative effects that ought to be taken into account in a case like this. We say that includes downstream emissions. Eighteen-four tells us this, an environmental statement must, and you'll see, A, there's a reference there to the scoping opinion or direction, be based upon it. Well, we're not taking a point on that. But B, and I think this is an important factor, we're not dealing with a science of perfection here, or counsel of perfection, as B notes, it must include information reasonably required for reaching a reasoned conclusion on the significant effects of the development on the environment, taking into account current knowledge and methods of assessment. Information reasonably required for reaching a reasoned conclusion is what is needed, taking into account current knowledge and methods of assessment. Twenty-six doesn't, we don't need to concern ourselves in ourselves with, but if you turn over in the appeal bundle, my lord, to page AB fifty-four, you'll find Schedule four set out in full. And one can see that it's headed information for inclusion in environmental statements. And then there are a number of different paragraphs setting out what the description should include. When we get to five, we see the key paragraph, a description of the likely significant effects of the development on the environment resulting from inter alia. And then, over the page at AB fifty-six, paragraph, sub-paragraph F, the impact of the project on climate, for example, the nature and magnitude of greenhouse gas emissions, and the vulnerability of the project to climate change. And then those words at the bottom of that paragraph, the description of the likely significant effects on the factors specified in Regulation four-two should cover the direct effects and any indirect, secondary, cumulative, transboundary, short term, medium term, and long term, permanent and temporary, positive and negative effects of the development. And I won't trouble you with the last paragraph, because it's no longer a matter which is being pursued in this appeal. So, indirect, secondary, cumulative, transboundary, short term, medium term, long term, it couldn't be wider, one might say, in terms of drafting. And indeed, that reflects the broad interpretation that it has been held on many occasions should be applied when considering the EIA directive.
Is the wording in Schedule four, paragraph five, taken directly from the directive?
Yes, my lord, yes. We have it in the bundle, but it's it's Article four, yes. So if one turns to AB thirty, thirty-one, Article four of the directive is set out there, and it's, again, it's paragraph five. Just while we're looking at paragraph five on AB thirty, thirty-one, perhaps I could ask you, your Lordship, to note paragraph six as well, which again is reflected in paragraph six of the EIA regulations. It says there, a description of the forecasting methods or evidence.
Sorry, where are you reading from?
Sorry, paragraph six now, just below the.
Article six of the directive?
It's Article four.
Article four.
AB thirty-one.
Annex four. It's annex.
Oh, it's annex four, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, AB thirty, thirty-one. So we've seen that five, paragraph five of annex four, is reflected in paragraph five of Schedule four of the regulations. Paragraph six, while we're on the page, is also reflected in paragraph six of the Schedule four of the regulations. A description of the forecasting methods or evidence used to identify and assess the significant effects on the environment, including details of difficulties, for example, technical deficiencies or lack of knowledge encountered compiling the required information and the main uncertainties involved. And the point being is that in an EIA process, one has to look into the future and forecast what might happen and what the impact might be of the development, and we say of material produced by the development, the product of the development, in this case fossil fuel, and the burning of it. But that won't be an exact science, and this provision, this paragraph, paragraph six, requires the description of the, in the environmental statement, to identify any shortfalls or deficiencies. And that will give the decision-maker the fullest picture, so that it can make a a decision on the full facts.
Yeah.
So that's the EIA directive and regulations, as I said, Regulation twenty-six rather mirrors Regulation three in as far as it prohibits the grant of planning permission without EIA having been undertaken. And in paragraph twenty-six, we just say this point, make this point about Regulation twenty-six-two. It's notable, we say, that Regulation twenty-six-two does not refer to the significant effects likely to arise as a result of the grant of planning permission. That is, those things for which consent is required. It doesn't focus on the, as it were, the description that we've just turned to in the, in the officer's report, but rather to the significant effects likely to arise as a result of the proposed development.
What's the difference?
Well, the grant of planning permission may, will certainly cover, for example, the infrastructure works and the like, whereas, and if one were to limit the assessment to the impact of that element of the project, well, then one is restricting the ambit and excluding indirect effects. And what we say is that Regulation twenty-six doesn't use that language.
They're two different concepts, aren't they? One is what is a development, and the other is what are the indirect effects of the development?
My lord, that's right.
I think you may be making a slightly different point. Well, I thought you were. I thought you were saying that perhaps this is a glimpse of ecologistas, to which we'll come, no doubt, though I'm not sure how germane it is to what we're dealing with here. You don't just look at the the particular thing that is permitted in the
Yeah.
planning permission. You look at what what the project is as a result of that.
My lord, I think it.
Yes, it's not salami slicing, in other words.
Well, it's certainly not salami slicing, but I think, in fact, we could, there is one particular line, I don't want to take it out of context, in your Lordship's judgment in the CAT, in the CAT case. Perhaps we can just jump to it. Say, time, paragraph seventeen begins at page A two, six, eight. This was a case involving the development of the site on the Wizdean Stadium down in Brighton. And so a development case as opposed to.
Brighton and Hove Albion's.
Form of football.
Former stadium.
My lord, yes. And at paragraph seventy-two, at AB two, eight, six, Lord Justice Limbleham says, however the project itself is defined, however the project itself is defined, the analysis required, and this was a screening case, but the principle ought to apply, we would say, on a case such as this, the analysis required in the screening process may have to embrace a wider consideration of environmental effects. Annex four of the EIA directive, which explains the information referred to in Article five, states that the description of the likely significant effects of the proposed project on the environment should cover the direct effects and any indirect, secondary, and we know the rest. As a European Court of Justice held in Abraham, the process of screening must consider not merely the likely effects of the works themselves, but also the impacts liable to result from the use and exploitation of the development once constructed. And then there is a reference to paragraphs forty-two and forty-three of the Abraham judgment, which I think, again, your Lordships will be well familiar with. But the point being that it would be simplistic and contrary to the proper approach not to take account of the environmental impact liable to result from the use and exploitation of the end product of those works.
I noticed that I'd referred to mischief with salami slicing in the previous.
In the previous, in the previous paragraph in the ecologist's case. And, you know, ecologist's was a salami slicing case. Abraham was not. Abraham was a case where the environmental impacts of the arising from the increased use of the Belgian airport was not assessed, when it had an effect on the, no doubt, on the neighbouring residents, as planes flew in and flew out, perhaps also as they taxied along the runway, but the impact was certainly not restricted to the development site itself. Anybody living above a flight line will know that increased air traffic has a sort of impact causes alarm and distress. So the important, perhaps, sentence, I hope I'm not placing too much importance on it, is the first one, that however the project itself is defined, the analysis required in the screening process may have to embrace a wider consideration of environmental effects. Obviously, that's a question of judgment for the decision-maker. And in the court below, and indeed in this court, we say that is right, but in a case involving fossil fuel production, the raison d'etre of the project being to produce, in this case, oil for sale for combustion with the result that greenhouse gas emissions will flow into atmosphere, it would be irrational not to take account of the downstream emissions. So it is a matter of judgment, but in a case like this, with this type of development, and it would apply equally to coal production and gas production, the downstream emissions are capable of being quantified and ought to be quantified, and that assessment ought to be before the decision-maker, so that they can have the fullest possible picture of the impact of the development.
Mr Justice Holgate approached it in two steps, didn't he? Grounds one, AMB.
Yes.
Perhaps because that was the shape of the argument that he did, and the conclusions he reached at one, two, six, and one, three, two reflect those two steps in his analysis. The first proposition was, as I understand it, that as a matter of law, the indirect effects contended for here did not fall within that concept under the legislation.
Yes.
That was proposition one. Proposition two was, if he was wrong about that, it was not irrational for the LPA not to take them into account in the circumstances here. Those are the two elements of his analysis on those two questions. Now, is it, for all the disagreement there is here, is it agreed or not between the parties that this, that there is the primary question of what the concept of indirect effects of the development means as a matter of, is a matter of law to the court?
Yes. Certainly from the point of view of the appellate, yes.
And within that frame, the court considers whether the particular decision taken here was irrational or not.
Yes.
And you're accepting the blue it and the approach to a level of scrutiny which is weapons-free.
Yeah, when it comes to the judgment of the.
When it comes to the judgment.
Exactly, my lord, yes.
Do you, do you need to go that far? I mean, if you succeed on your, my lord, it's called proposition one.
Yes.
And the LPA never considered it.
Yes.
Do you need to show that it was irrational? Or you just need to show they failed to take into account something irrelevant?
Well, if we succeed. Well, if we succeed on point one, and your lordships accept that it was irrational not to consider it, then, then we succeed and we do not need to look at point two because it's agreed that those emissions were never taken into account.
No, I'm putting it the other way around. If they were never taken into account?
Yes.
Then they could have been, or could have been, should have been, I see.
If they should have been taken into account, if we're, if your lordships accept that we're right that in a type, this type of development, downstream greenhouse gas emissions should have been taken into account.
If they should have been taken into account but were not?
Yes.
Then the decision is legally flawed. On the other hand, they could have been but need not have been?
Yes.
Then you go on to your irrational not.
Yeah, yeah. And your lordship, it seems to me that the parties, and indeed the appallant and the learned judge in the court below, are diametrically opposed in their position. We say irrational not to take them into account. Lord Justice, Mr. Justice Holgate says, as a matter of law, they shouldn't be taken into account. And indeed, my own friends support that position. But there is, there is obviously a different approach that your lordships could take, which is, well, one can't say it's irrational not to take them into account. Each case will have to be decided on its own, on its own merits. And then you'd look at the question of whether or not in this case, the county council heard in terms of its assessment of whether or not they should be taken into account, whether or not the reasons put forward by the developer were sufficient to justify them not doing so in this instance.
And even if you're right on both points?
Yes.
So it all has to go back for another
Yes.
assessment, that wouldn't necessarily stop the county council from granting punishment?
No, 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 not at all.
They would just have to do it, you say, on the basis of better, better information than they had?
Yes, and it may be that the information is, you know, at the moment, we have the ex post facto assessment of the greenhouse gas emissions from Dr. Solder, but the developer itself would be able to advance all manner of arguments. No doubt they will, if they're given the opportunity to do so. I mean, it's important to note that the arguments that have been, were advanced in the court below as to substitution or displacement of oil, as to significance of the impact. Those are all ex post facto arguments advanced by the response in their defence, but they never featured in any of the environmental impact assessment process. And the, and the important point there is, as much as anything, that apart from how one normally has to consider ex post facto evidence, is that the public have not had the opportunity to be consulted on any of those arguments. Because they simply didn't, they didn't arise. We've got the reasoning, the justification in paragraphs 121 and 122 of the developer's environment statement and the environment statement review, accepting those, those points. So, my lords, before I move away from, I haven't moved away from it already, the regulations and how one should interpret them, can I ask your lordships to pick up the few pages that we handed up and put on your lordship's bench? These are the environmental impact assessment guidelines. Because that guidance issued by the government identifies the purpose of environmental impact assessment. And does so, I don't think these pages are numbered, but in the penultimate page,
Yeah.
at the top of the page, by saying this, "The aim of environmental impact assessment is to protect the environment by ensuring that a local planning authority, when deciding whether to grant planning permission for a project, which is likely to have a different effect on the environment, does so in the full knowledge of the likely significant effects and takes this into account in the decision-making process." Now, that is a summary of the case law on the, on the purpose of the EIA directive. Both case law from the Court of Justice of the EU and our domestic courts. And I'll briefly take you to some of that in a moment. But before we move away from this page, can I just ask you to note that third paragraph down, the government advise decision-makers that environmental impact assessment should not be a barrier to growth and will only apply to a small proportion of projects considered within the town and country planning regime. The short point being is that the floodgates will not necessarily be opened by the sort of decision which we invite your lordships to take in this, in this case. EIA itself is a process which only applies to a small proportion of projects.
It wouldn't matter, would it? The floodgates argument wasn't impinging anywhere at all on the interpretation of the
No.
words, does it?
It doesn't, my lord, you're quite right. And it, and it didn't feature in
No.
any of the EIA process. It's, it's, again, an ex post facto point, but it, but it doesn't assist. If that, if the EIA regulation should be interpreted as we suggest, then the fact that it might open the floodgates is neither here nor there. From the point of view
It wouldn't mean that a great many more projects would in fact be the subject of EIA than have been.
Well, it might depend on, it would depend very much on your lordship's interpretation, but also any test that your lordships might adopt.
Yeah.
You've seen the two formulations from the appallant and Friends of the Earth. The appallant's formulation wasn't one which was advanced before Mr. Justice Holgate in quite such clear terms, but Friends of the Earth clearly features in one series that it set out. If, if your lordships, and I'm not suggesting you necessarily should, but if your lordships were to take the view that the type of development is particularly key, and we're talking about fossil fuel development, then it, there may be more, there may be, let me put it this way. We've seen that there have been voluntary assessments, for example in the HJ Banks case, where developers have volunteered the information to the decision-maker. In other cases, they, we see in this case that the developer decided not to do so. But, but it would, we also know that fossil fuel developers are able to, and indeed, they're not required to, but are able to account for downstream emissions in their accounting documentation. And you might think that it's not a very great step, particularly given the context, which I've already identified, us facing a climate emergency, that we shouldn't be requiring the developer to make such assessment and to provide it to a decision-maker so that they have the fullest picture. Again, noting, as my lord did, that that doesn't preclude the grant of planning permission, it just gives the decision-maker a much better and clearer understanding of what's at stake. So, my lord, turning through our skeleton argument, and I'm going to perhaps not go into too much detail or too much depth when I, when I refer to the Squire case, because I know my own friend has something to say about that. And I don't want to trust this on her, on her territory. But you'll see in paragraph 27, we
Yep.
identify and rely on the decision of my lord, Lord Justice Limblon and others in the Squire case. And that was a case where we say it shows that EIA is necessary for effects which arise from impacts caused by a development but for which no planning permission is required. So the project included, as it, as it obviously would, when one is breeding chickens intensively, the generation of a huge amount of manure. But the development for which planning permission was granted and the description of the development didn't identify production of manure. This is a by-product, which, and the report itself doesn't indicate whether or not the farmer was going to make any money out of the sale of the manure, but one might reasonably assume that he or she would. But the point was that that manure was to be spread over neighbouring and third-party land out with the control of the developer, but, but for the purposes of this point, more importantly, out with the description of the actual development.
In that case, as I recall it, the parties agreed
They did, my lord.
that this was an indirect effect
Yes.
of the development.
Yes. They did, and rightly in our submission so. And their agreement was endorsed by Mr. Justice Holgate at first instance, I'm told by my own friend, who knows best than me about the case.
Well, sorry, what we know is that Mr. Justice Holgate did not doubt the correctness
Oh, yeah.
of Squire, though he couldn't perhaps. But he distinguished it from the present case.
Yes, yes, that's absolutely true. My lord, the requirement to construe the directive and the regulations broadly is something which was identified by the advocate general Coquart in Abraham against Weylonia. You'll see a reference there to paragraph 31. And indeed, in that case, remembering that was the Belgian airport case, paragraph 33, the advocate general said, "In the case of an airport, the type and extent of the proposed air traffic and the resulting effects on the environment are relevant. The developer can also, as it were, be expected to provide that information. Failure to require information on air traffic or on the effects of increased air traffic would therefore be incompatible with the EIA directive." And then you'll see those two quote, the quotes at 42 and 43 from Abraham, and a reference to, my lord, Lord Justice Limblon's judgment in the CAT case at paragraph 30. That was, if you remember, the Wiedeen Stadium development. And, and a project which involved the execution of construction works, but we and that's why we say that, my lord, Lord Justice Limblon would, will know why, but why, there's the use of the word development in paragraph 72. There, your lordship was dealing with development, the execution of construction works. And we say that the principle applies equally and ought to apply equally to the second type of project identified in Article 12A, that being the extraction of mineral resources, and to the end use and exploitation of those resources once extracted.
Do you accept a distinction or not between the end product of the construction of a runway at an airport, as such as Abraham, which encompasses flying of aircraft into and out of the airport, which couldn't have happened to the same degree?
Yes.
Before the construction of the new runway? On the one hand, that that being the end product to which reference was made in Abraham. And in the circumstances of the present case, the end product construed, as you would have us construe it, as meaning the greenhouse gas emissions from, largely from motor vehicles, but also from other, from aviation, perhaps from other modes of transport. And once the oil extracted at Hawley has been taken somewhere else, refined, taken as refined as petroleum from that refinery to places unknown, distributed, sold at petrol filling stations, put into motor cars, motor cars driven, and exhaust fumes with greenhouse gas emissions escaping into the atmosphere. And that is your end product in your argument.
Well, the end product in our argument is not the greenhouse gas emissions, they're the indirect effects. The end product is the oil that has been refined.
So the end, the end product, the end product as such?
Yes.
Is the is what, is the
The oil.
is the petrol leaving the refinery?
Yes.
That's the end product.
You do say that. You say the end product is the oil which is extracted from the wells.
Yes.
And what you then need to assess, you say, is the indirect environmental impact of that oil?
Yes.
And the indirect environment, environmental impact of that oil, you say, must include the greenhouse gases which will be emitted when the oil is used or exploited, to use the court's phrase, because without refinement, it cannot be used or exploited.
Yes. And the reason d'etre of the project is to extract oil for that very purpose, so that a profit can be made. I mean, we're not, there's nothing heretical in this suggestion. We're not, we're not extending the, into the realms of speculation, which I think is one, is a phrase used by one of the antipodean judges, possibly Mrs. Justice Payne. Everything, all this is reasonably foreseeable, an obvious significant environmental effect, we would say, if one were to look at it in the language of deployed by my, I think, my own friends in some of their skeleton arguments, and indeed in some of the domestic case law. But the end product is, is the oil. The fact that it's refined, it doesn't undermine our position, we would respectfully submit. Refinement itself is, we can see, regulated. I think my old friend, Mr. Elvin QC identifies that fact. But the, the emissions arising from the refinement itself are going to be assessed in, or at least perhaps even capped, in that context. But it doesn't involve any assessment of the ultimate downstream emissions. The refinery itself will not be, as it were, held responsible or have to assess the downstream emissions arising from the oil that it refines.
So to use a Diplockian word, you would equiprate the oil as end product with the flying of aircraft onto the runway in Abraham as end product?
My lord, yes. I mean, actually, in Abraham, there's no reference to, although there's reference to noise, one doesn't have, one might think that perhaps if the decision were, or the, or the issue were to arise again today, in Abraham, those concerned about the impact would be thinking not just about noise, but greenhouse gas emissions arising from the very fact that more planes were flying in and out of the Belgian airport. And then there might be a question about whether those planes were using sustainable air fuel, about which I know very little, but I understand that there is some learning. And, you know, if you think, if one thinks about, again, I suppose, floodgates, although we've, through my lord, Lord Justice Limblon, identified the fact that floodgates don't have affect interpretation. But, you know, the production of steel, I think, is one of the matters that Mr. Justice Holgate and my own friends have raised. I mean, steel might be produced, and no doubt when it's produced, will, will result in greenhouse gas emissions from the very production of the steel. But what it's then used for may be carbon neutral, may even be be carbon neutral, may even be positive. A wind turbine, for example, made out of steel, may ultimately result in a saving of greenhouse gas emissions.
The logic, sorry, the logic of your argument would be, would it, that steel fabrication would have to be, the EIA for a new steel plant, if ever we built one...
Well, yes.
...would have to be, would have to embrace the usage of steel in all manner of subsequent processes?
Well, my lord, whether we ever built one is...
Well, let's assume we did.
Because we're now, we're now in the context where we may not, because of what we now know about the...
No, but I'm only, to use the expression, this is a thought experiment.
I understand, my lord, entirely. And what I'm saying is this, that the extent to which the assessment must be undertaken is governed by the EIA regulations and the requirement to provide the fullest possible picture, but at the same time, not to go beyond the bounds of reasonableness in doing so, and to do so having regard to the current level of knowledge and methodologies and the like that exist. So there's a limit, and one cannot expect a developer to, as I said, tread into the, trespass into the realms of speculation.
With your steel plant, so, I mean, you might say, well, there are so many different things that steel could be used for. It could be the structure of a building, it could be a battle tank, it could be a wind turbine, it could be anything. We simply cannot assess that kind of thing.
Yes.
With hydrocarbons, on the other hand, we can, because we know perfectly well, the only thing that's going to happen to them is they're going to be refined and burnt.
Yes. My lord, exactly, and one, I'm not suggesting that your lordships should be, should confine yourselves necessarily, if you don't think it's appropriate to do so, in this appeal where you to uphold it, to fossil fuel development, but we have a particular type of development, the raison d'etre, the very purpose for which is to sell that which is extracted for the purposes of burning, and we know the obvious effects that arise as a consequence.
It would help me, and I, in a sense, flagged this concern earlier, or desire, if you will, it would help me to see in the authorities the proposition that supports your response to my lord's question. Well, putting it wider, if I may, if you don't mind, the proposition that supports the argument you're now explaining, it would help me just to find in the jurisprudence where you find support for that.
My lord, yes, can I just turn around for a...
Yeah.
Yes, my lord, I'm only resisting the temptation to take you to Squire, because my learned friend is going to take you to it as well, but...
It's a split between yous at this time. Can you help us with the CJ EU...
Yes, absolutely, my lord, yes, I was going to do that, and I'm sorry if I haven't got there as quickly as I...
No, no, we've been asking you questions about it.
But my lord...
The temptation to go to the authorities is now irresistible.
Does the case law get any better from your perspective than what you've quoted in paragraphs twenty-eight and twenty-nine in your skeleton argument?
Well, in terms of the EU case law, that encapsulates the points.
Yeah, that's the high point, that's the high point of your case.
That's really helpful, so there's no point in us getting out the bundle of authorities, it's there, you've, to help the court, you've extracted the principles on which you rely, and it's the passages you've quoted.
Yes.
Right.
My lord, we haven't touched on the Preston case, that involved the outflow which was to take sewage into the River Kent in Cumbria. I only, I'm not going to spend much time on it, my lord, but it's tab twenty-four, and we say that is another, that is a case where, sorry, where are you looking at? Tab twenty-four.
Of?
Of the appealed, sorry, the...
I don't have tabs, so could you give me a page?
Yes, page AB four-eight-one.
Four-eight-one.
A decision of His Honour Judge Eric QC. And the learned judge at paragraph forty-six, page AB four-nine-three, says, "As I noted in paragraph twenty-nine apart, Mr Barrett intended for the interested party, that being the developer, that the EIA regulations are to be interpreted such that the only effects of the outfall which should be considered are those resulting from its construction, but that no regard was to be had to the effect of the discharge from it." He referred, the learned judge, to the EIA directive from the Brussels case, we have the Brussels case in our authority bundle. "I do, however," he said, about nine lines down, "derive considerable assistance from the wording of the EIA regulations, and that wording makes it clear beyond peraventure that the assessments undertaken pursuant to those regulations are to have regard to the effects of the use of a permitted structure and not just its construction. It would suffice for these purposes to refer solely to Regulation 4.3, which explains that when the effects of the proposed development are various factors to be considered, those effects are to include the operational effects of the proposed development." This was a construction-type case, again, like the one before, albeit very different in nature than the one before, my lord, your Justice Limblom, in the, in CAT. Paragraph forty-nine over the page, my lord, "The operational effects of the outfall are its use to discharge, treat its sewage and trade effluent into the River Kent at a particular point. It follows that in considering whether the temporary outfall may have significant adverse effects on the environment, regard is to be had not just to the consequences of the physical installation of the outfall, but also to the consequences of the discharge through it at that point." And ultimately, the grounds of challenge were made out, and the decision was quashed. Another example, but the high point, again, of the Court of Justice of the EU's case law identified in the skeleton argument, as my lord identified, paragraphs twenty-eight, twenty-nine. While we have the bundle of authorities open, my lord, can I ask you to, and I'll take this relatively quickly, if I may, can I ask your lordships to turn up the case known as the Frackfree-Rydell case, it's a decision of Mrs Justice Lang, page AB three-three-eight. And this is the case where the claimant sought judicial review of the grant of planning permission to carry out hydraulic fracking of gas, and the grounds of judicial review, I can see from the head note, page AB three-three-eight, were that the authority, local authority, had unlawfully failed to take into account an assessment of the climate change impacts arising from the burning of the gas in the production phase of the development. And that challenge was dismissed, and the key paragraphs dealing with that challenge and the learned judge's rejection of it, which will be found at AB three-four-nine, paragraph thirty-seven to thirty-nine. And I really just draw your lordship's attention to it, to say that, as a comment really, that the circumstances in that case were the shale gas produced by the proposed development would be pumped into the power station at Natton, which already had been authorised by the Environment Agency, we can see this from paragraph thirty-nine, to burn gas from existing well sites, where there was no increasing capacity at that power station, thought as part of the proposal, and that any gas produced from the well site piped to Natton would be within the existing limits of the permit already conferred by the agency. Were factors which led the learned judge to conclude that the absence of any assessment of the greenhouse gas emissions arising from that gas production did not vitiate the decision. We say, in short, my lords, that is a very different position from the one before your And although the gas wasn't distinguishable, this case is. Two other domestic cases, if I can take your lordship's turn very briefly. The Preston New Road Action Group case, page AB three-eight-three, also known as Frackman, a case involving a challenge to the Secretary of State's decision under Act Two A eight of the Town and Country Planning Act to grant planning permission for shale gas exploration...
Just before you cite it, for what proposition are you citing?
Well, my learned friends refer to it in detail in their skeleton arguments.
For what proposition are you citing?
I'm citing it, counterintuitively perhaps, I'm citing it to say that it is of a different nature than the case before you...
Well, there were two separate projects, potentially, one was the exploration phase...
Yes.
...and the other was the...
Exactly, my lord.
...exploitation phase, if the exploratory phase proved successful.
Exactly.
And all of this court decided was that there would be another EIA...
Yes.
...further downstream if the exploration turned out to be successful.
Exactly, my lord, and it's a very similar situation to that encountered by the Supreme Court in the Norwegian case that we've included in the bundle, but yeah, no more modus operandi, I think your lordships have the point. The final, well, the penultimate domestic case is at AB four-four-five, the HJ Banks case.
For what proposition do you cite that?
Well, we cite it only in this, in this respect. The developer itself provided the decision-maker with the assessment of downstream emissions arising from the burning of the coal, or the forecast burning of the coal. Insofar as it is said by any of my learned friends that it is impossible to provide an appropriate assessment of the burning of the oil that might be produced at Horse Hill, we say that that is, without any foundation, not only can coal be assessed, oil too, and there are various different ways in which one can carry that out, and methodologies, some of which feature in Dr Solder's evidence, because she applied them when assessing it for herself. No more, no less than that. Finally, my lord, and I think it is, it's an authority which I thought, suggested to my own friends, we should include, was the decision of the Court of Session of the Inner House in the Greenpeace against the Advocate General case, which is at page AB five-eight-one. None of us have referred to it in our skeleton arguments, because it, well, it postdated the filing of our skeleton arguments, but it's...
Five-eight-one?
Five-eight-one, my lord.
This is quite a recent decision.
It is, my lord.
So this is Inner House, seven October twenty-one?
My lord, yeah. And Greenpeace appealed against a decision of the Secretary of State, the Business Energy and Industrial Strategy, that consent should be granted by the Oil and Gas Authority pursuant to a different set of regulations, to two oil and gas operators, to allow them to exploit the Vaulick Oil Field in the North Sea.
Yeah, what's the proposition for which you cite it?
The short point is, my lord, that the Court of Session endorsed the judgment of Mr Justice Holgate in the Finch case.
Oh, I see.
And you'll see that from paragraphs, if I can take you to the page referenced, AB five-nine-three, paragraphs sixty-three to sixty-eight.
Yeah.
It may be that it either, I invite your lordships to read it now, or perhaps outside of the courtroom, but if I can indicate that before getting to the merits headed above paragraph sixty-three, the court assessed the question of whether or not Greenpeace International was an aggrieved person, and you'll see that in paragraph fifty-six to fifty-nine. And they concluded in paragraph fifty-nine that Greenpeace was not an aggrieved person. And at the bottom of paragraph fifty-nine, you'll see the words, "For this reason, the appeal must be refused."
So you're saying that passages you cited at fifty, sorry, sixty-three to sixty-eight are over?
My lord, yes.
And of only persuasive authority anyway, presumably?
Well, persuasive, in my understanding, is that consistency is important, for obvious reasons, but in terms of the value of the judgment to us in this, in this appeal, there is reference to the fact that this case, the Finch case, has been appealed to your lordships, but there's no indication whether or not the parties identified the grounds of appeal, whether there was any discussion or determination of similar grounds advanced by the, by Greenpeace International. None of that is identified in the paragraphs that I've taken your lordships to, paragraph sixty-three to sixty-eight. And so, in my respectful submission, there's, with respect to the Court of Session, there's a weight that one would, would need to attach to that judgment, but I thought it was important by drawing to your lordship's attention, and have done so.
Is there an appeal in that case, super?
I suspect so, my lord, but I can't tell you, my lord, we may be able to find out.
My lord, general question, the question is being watched as well.
Thank you. My lord, looking at the clock, I'm running short of time, but I'm going to take, and I don't know whether or not your lordships wish a break at any point, or you're happy to continue to...
Go straight on.
Thank you. The international case law that we provided is that, it begins at page AB six-two-three. And we provided it on the basis that it's informative, not that it is determinative, that you're bound by it in any way, shape or form, but one can see how judges in other jurisdictions, some of which operate in a similar ways to ours, particularly Australia, have grappled with the issues that are raised in this case.
Well, as far as you can take it, is to say that the argument you advance to us is not outlandish?
Yes, as I say, I think I use the word...
You can't really go further than that, can you?
Not outlandish, and the approach that we suggest your lordships should take chimes with the approach taken by the learned judges. So in the... So in the Federal Court of Australia case, the court itself, and I'm just going to identify these paragraphs perhaps, my lord, without taking you through them, perhaps addresses under the heading Resolution of the Issues at page AB 643, beginning at paragraph 53 through to 57, the question of effects that should be taken into account and indirect effects at that.
Sorry, the paragraph reference?
53 to 57. This was a case involving the development of a dam, the Nathan Dam, which would, it was agreed, I think, have an impact on downstream, literally downstream, on the river as a result of irrigation and the use of land surrounding the river for a process known as cotton ginning, which I understand is a separation of seed from lint, but I'm not an expert on that. And that in itself would have effects, indirect effects, on the river itself. And 57 is perhaps worth touching on, page AB 645, the learned judges said it is sufficient in this case to indicate, four lines down, that all adverse impacts includes each consequence which can reasonably be imputed as within the contemplation of the proponent of the action, whether those consequences are within the control of the proponent or not. Now, in fact, we don't suggest that that is an appropriate test because it would limit the extent of assessment to, on a subjective basis, to the contemplation, those matters which are in the contemplation of the actor or the developer.
I don't think that's right. Can reasonably be imputed?
Ah, well, sorry, yes, forgive me. That is a much more objective approach than me focusing on the word contemplation. Another way of putting it is that the, you know, one should require assessment of those indirect effects which are reasonably foreseeable. Again, applying a, an objective test.
Reasonably foreseeable?
Yes.
And is that supported in?
It is in some of this international.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, is that supported in CJU authority?
Those aren't words that I recollect the CJU using.
Or in the UK domestic authority?
No, the, we have the sort of case like Squire where the obvious significant effect of the manure was
I'm not quite sure why you put the test quite so broadly on the facts of this case.
Well
You say that it's not just reasonably foreseeable.
It's inevitable, yeah, it's a reason
It's what the whole project is about.
Exactly, it's a very purpose.
But we're seeking to construe on our path to that consideration, what the words actually mean. So we can't avoid, can we, grappling with the definitional question?
My lord, my learned friend, Mr Brown QC, and his learned junior, suggests that there ought to be some guidance for decision makers. And if your lordships conclude that the proposition we advance is just applicable to the type of development we're talking about, well, then that is a very, that's a very clear but also restricted, as it were, focus for decision makers. If you, if your lordships were to take a view that it extends beyond fossil fuel development, then guidance and as to the approach may be thought to be necessary.
Could you help me at least? In your skeleton argument, is there a sentence or paragraph which you formulate the interpretation of those words, indirect effects of the development, for which you contend?
My lord, yes, it's actually in our supplementary skeleton.
Right.
Which is at page, begins at CB2/63.
Yeah.
And paragraph 10, CB2/65. We begin by inviting the court to adopt the intervenor's approach, which Mr Justice Holgate identified in his judgment. And alternatively, we say that the court should consider whether the following test would suffice, namely that an indirect effect is one which is reasonably foreseeable in light of current knowledge and methods of assessment, given the nature and purpose of the development, whether or not such an effect is within the developer's control.
Right, but that's the alternative. Is that, as it were, the lesser alternative? At paragraph nine, you contend, well, you invite actually
Yes.
Us to adopt the test advanced by the intervenor. So that's your primary case, is it?
Yes, it is. One could certainly describe our alternative as shorter, and perhaps has the benefit of being so, but we wouldn't argue with the suggestion put forward by Friends of the Earth in paragraph 13 of their written submissions, which you'll find at CB2/53. Perhaps as, again, we don't demur from what we said in paragraph nine, that we invite you to apply the test advanced by the intervenor, but we put forward an alternative which perhaps is written in more straightforward language.
Well, the intervenor doesn't contend for reasonable foreseeability as such.
No.
Does it?
No, it doesn't, no, my lord.
Likely, I would say.
Well, in fact, when it comes to floodgates, again, the whole point is that indirect effects are only liable to be assessed if they are likely to have a significant effect. And so we've got a filter process there from the beginning, likelihood and significant effect, and
And that comes in the regulation, doesn't it?
Yes, it is, sorry.
You say the limiting words to effect are likely and significant.
Yes.
Because effect is an extremely broad word.
It is, my lord. And in order for it to be required for assessment, it has to be a likely effect, so beyond the realms of, not within the realms of speculation, and significant too.
So you're
Although significance is clearly, sorry, forgive me.
The likely comes from the additional paragraph at the end of paragraph five. And that is likely, likely isn't in, I'm looking at article three, is not in article three. So you're saying the meaning of indirect, indirect significant effects in article three is effective wording in paragraph five?
Yes, five, sub-paragraph B, 51 sub-paragraph B, if one's looking at AB 11, the EIA directive.
Yes.
Yeah, well, likelihood is a threshold question.
Yes.
It's not a definitional consideration when we're looking at the concept of effect as such.
No.
And that's, we must get ourselves onto the right plane with that. Your paragraphs nine and 10 in your supplementary venture, paragraph 13 of the Friends of the Earth's skeleton submission
Yes, yes.
And the concept is, the concept of indirect effects, as I gathered from what is said there, is more remote than direct effect.
Yes.
But not so remote that they can't be attributed to the development at all.
Yes.
So any, that would imply, as you understand it, would it, since you've adopted it, any effect that could be attributed, to use the language selected, to the development at all, that means to the very last link in that perhaps lengthy chain.
Yes.
And it would be good enough to take you beyond the refinement of the crude oil.
It would certainly be good enough to take us beyond that. How far it would extend in another form of developments outside of fossil fuel developments would be a question of reasonableness in terms of what is, what can be reasonably required. And so I think that there is, and indeed, what can be reasonably foreseen. That's perhaps why we contend for the alternative, which is set out in paragraph 10.
Well, in both your formulation at 10 and the Friends of the Earth's at 13.
Yes.
It may fairly be said, noted, that there is a large element of evaluative judgment for the decision maker.
My lord, yes.
You would accept?
Absolutely, my lord, yes. It's about guiding the decision maker as far as one can, but leaving the ultimate assessments to the decision maker.
And that evaluative judgment would be susceptible to Wensbury scrutiny by the Court?
Yes, it would. And in order to assess whether or not a decision maker went wrong in a Wensbury sense, one would need to have regard to the particular circumstances, in fact, of the case, the type of development, what was known currently
Yeah.
In terms of the state of knowledge of the science, and the nature of the project, and so forth. Yes.
Thank you.
My lord, I was delving into the international case, and we were looking at the Minister for the Environment and Heritage against Queensland Conservation.
Bear in mind the time, Mr
Yeah, I'm literally, I'm aware of it, my lord, and I'm grateful for the reminder.
In a sense, I just wonder, standing back, Mr Rullers, whether we've really got to it now? Because we've asked you, and we've taken you to the authorities, or at least invited you to take us, and you've very helpfully pointed to your skeleton argument. And we've asked you what formulation you contend for, and you've made that very clear and its consequences. So, as it were, where do we go from here?
Shall I sit down, my lord?
No, I was just saying that, I was asking what the next place in our journey
Well, I think we can sidestep quite a lot of what I was going to say, and it's been helpful that you've effectively put me on the spot.
No, no, not at all. I mean, I just want to, I just really want to get an idea of what's left.
Well, not a lot in terms of the grounds that I'm addressing. I do, if you forgive me spending two minutes, I just want to take you through those other international authorities, of interest as they are, my learned friend says, but actually I think they're a little bit more informative than that. And it's only to identify the relevant paragraphs.
Right.
So we then turn to, in the bundle, the case of Gray against the Minister for Planning and Others, Mrs Justice Payne's judgment in relation to a coal mine in the, a large coal mine known as the Anvil Hill Project in the Hunter Valley.
Page?
And it begins at page A648, and the learned judge identifies her findings beginning at page AB 670. But it's at page AB 674 that I'd invite your lordships to, under the heading Causation of Environmental Impact.
Sorry, so sorry, I missed the page.
AB 674, my lord.
Thank you very much.
Paragraphs 83 to 100. And I'm not going to take you through this in any depth, but 84, the learned judge identifies a decision called Bell, in which Mr Justice Bignold accepted that an EIS, environmental impact, statement could be required to consider off-site effects. And he concluded, you'll see at the bottom of that paragraph, that external environmental impacts of some development are relevant in assessing the likely impact on the environment where a real and sufficient link is demonstrated. And then in this case, which was a case brought against the Director General, the Director General argued that if causation became relevant, he argued that it was not, there must be some likelihood of the particular effects occurring, and proposed that an appropriate test beyond that identified by Mr Justice Bignold is that the environmental effects of a proposed project are significant, proximate, and not unlikely to occur. The learned judge then addresses the Queensland Conservation case, the cotton ginning case we've already looked at, over the page at the AB 675. And then, moving on to page AB 677, your lordship can see that there is a submission made by the Director General halfway down the page in paragraph 97, that the need to assess the greenhouse gas emissions from the use of ships built in the shipyards which use fossil fuels would arise if the claimant or plaintiff's arguments were correct. And what Mrs Justice Payne says is ultimately, it is an issue of fact and degree to be considered in each case, which has been recognising cases such as the Queensland Conservation case. So it brings us back to the question of the judgment of the decision maker. And again, it's all, I would suggest, chimes with the approach that judges in our jurisdiction have taken. I'm going to jump over the Wild Earth Guardians case, and perhaps just indicates that, tab 32, the Gloucester Resources against Minister for Planning and another case, which I'm afraid
The judge's conclusion is at paragraph 100?
100, my lord, yes. Sorry, perhaps I took that too swiftly. I consider there's a sufficiently proximate link between the mining of a very substantial reserve of thermal coal in New South Wales, and worth emphasising, the only purpose of which is the use of fuel in power stations, and the emission of greenhouse gases, which contribute to climate change, global warming, which is impacting now and likely to continue to do so on the Australian and consequently New South Wales environment, to require assessment of that greenhouse gas contribution of the coal when burned in an environmental assessment under part 3A. That was of the legislation that the learned judge was concerned with.
Right.
The Gloucester Resources case, it's a very long judgment, and we photocopied it in a way which doesn't assist anybody with
It's one that's broken in the middle of the bundles. I've got one that starts in the middle of nowhere at page 515 in that bundle.
Well, I apologise for that, that's another deficit, but what we're quite happy to do is to provide full SCAP versions and a full version of those judgments.
This is one in landscape, is it?
It is, it is.
Right, I haven't even looked at it.
No, well, I don't blame your lordship for not doing so. But it was a judgment of Chief Justice Preston.
Sorry, where are we starting?
It begins at page AB 725, my lord.
Thank you.
I feel rather, yeah, begins at AB, yes, 725, and the learned chief justice addresses the greenhouse gas emissions of the Rocky Hill Coal Project, beginning at paragraph 486, at page AB 779. He identifies the estimated emissions over the lifetime of the mine, the scope three emissions, he indicates, will be at least 36 million tonnes. We have about 10 million tonnes of CO2 estimated by Dr Solder in this case. He says the estimated scope three emissions are limited to the emissions from the combustion of products, coal from the project by end users, such as steel from the project by end users such as steel mills and electricity power stations, as the emissions from shipping of product coal were not included. Greenhouse gas emissions and the combustion of coal by end users are downstream emissions. And then he identifies a number of cases, in fact, some of those cases that we've already taken your lordships to in the following paragraphs, where judges in Australia and in the US have determined that downstream emissions ought to be assessed.
Sorry, which paragraph do you?
We're now, I'm taking very quickly, my lord, but from paragraph.
We've got 504, for instance.
495 onwards, my lord, yes, 2513.
499, 504.
Yes. 495, he notes the Queensland Conservation case, the Cotton Gilling case.
513?
501, he addresses the Gray case, the Anvil Coal Mine case. 507, a case from the US, the Montana Environmental case, where, in fact, in that case, halfway down paragraph 507, he notes that the court found that it was arbitrary and capricious to quantify the socio-economic benefits while failing to quantify costs of the greenhouse gas emissions from the mine. And our point in this case is that national planning policy advises decision makers to take account of the benefits of mineral extraction, indeed to give it great weight. That is obviously a benefit to be taken into account as to what might happen in the future. And what we say is that one cannot conceivably, in this context, take account of the benefits that might accrue to the economy without taking account of the dis-benefits. There's an analogy, although I'm not sure it's a very good one, but I can't get it out of my head, the plums and the duffs argument in criminal, the criminal context. One takes out the plums and leaves the duff behind. And we say that that unbalance or tilted balance in favour of fossil fuel production is wholly inappropriate, particularly in these troubled times. So the Nature in Youth Norway case is one which I'm not going to take you to because it reflects, my lord, Lord Justice Lindblom's judgment in the Frackman case, although it doesn't refer to it for obvious reasons. And then finally, the Royal Dutch Shell case.
That timing was the obvious reason, wasn't it?
It certainly wasn't, as your lordship indicated before your lordship. It was a premature application. The Royal Dutch Shell case is included in the bundle at tab 34, page AB849, if only to reiterate the point, should it be argued again, that scope three emissions are capable of being assessed. Indeed, there is a requirement as a consequence of this decision that shall not just assess their downstream emissions from all of their operations, every, as it were, litre of petrol bought and then burnt by consumers down the road, but they reduce those emissions substantially by 2030. And the one perhaps additional point that I would make is that in that judgment, insofar as one needs it and doesn't understand it already or would like further information about it, the Hague Court sets out the facts on climate change and its consequences at page AB853 through to AB855. And I would suggest, if your lordships wish to know any more, that that is a document to which you turn. So, my lord, ground one, little Roman numeral one, turns really on the question of the learned judge's decision as to whether or not the correct legal test was as he identified in paragraph 101 of his judgment. I've taken the judgment out, but it's CB1/71. You know the tests that we advocate, and that's advanced as an alternative by Friends of the Earth. Mr. Justice Holgate indicated, six lines down, paragraph 101, that the true legal test is whether an effect on the environment is an effect of the development for which planning permission is sought. And we respectfully submit that that is too restrictive, that one has to look more widely, as was said by my lord, Lord Justice Lindblom in the CAT case.
Suppose you substituted the word 'project' for 'development', would that be in line with it?
Well, providing that the project encapsulated the type of development and indeed the raison d'etre for it, then that would effectively suffice. But one would need to know that's what a project meant.
I'm not aware that Mr. Justice Holgate ever defined what he meant by 'the development'.
No, but he certainly didn't mean it. If I could put it this way, he defined it in his own mind as not including the ultimate combustion of the oil produced. And a project, I would respectfully suggest, implies a wider ambit than the development itself, which planners might well think involved the site, what is being thought and obtained, what obtains planning permission, the infrastructure on the site, as opposed to what might happen around it and beyond it. And as we know, the EIA process regularly assesses impacts that are beyond the site's boundaries. For instance, traffic, the impact of traffic on air quality in a neighbouring town centre, something of that nature perhaps.
In paragraph 101, Mr. Justice Holgate uses both the expression 'the development' and the expression 'project'. Does he use them synonymously in that paragraph? First question.
He uses it in the last sentence at the end of that sentence.
Is there anything to indicate that he's not treating them as for his purposes, they're synonymous? You may say that's wrong, but let's understand what he's saying to us first of all.
My initial response, my lord, I probably wanted to have a think about it, but is that he's using it in a synonymous.
A synonymous way, right.
That's the way it reads to me.
Fine, okay. Second question. What is the project, what do you say is the project in this case? How do you define the project?
The product, the product is the production of oil for sale for profit.
Yeah. That's the project.
In a nutshell, yes.
Thank you.
The point about the oil being sold for profit is that it's only going to be sold for profit if it's going to be capable of being used and being burnt.
Sorry, are you now refining your definition of the project? Or simply explaining it?
I'm simply explaining it, I think, my lord.
No, I'm not just playing games.
No, no, no.
This is important. We need to understand what your understanding of the project is. And that's a fundamental thing in your argument.
Yeah, well, we haven't ever said that the project extends to the actual combustion. In other words, that there's only salami splitting.
No, no, the project is, and I've written it down, the production of oil for sale for profit.
Yes.
That's the project.
The underpinning basis on which oil will be produced for profit is that it is capable of being used by consumers, whether it be in China or in Chelsea.
And then stage two is having defined the project in that way, what are its indirect effects?
My lord, yes, and whether or not they are significant. That's the third stage for the decision maker.
Sorry, I don't want.
No, no, no.
I know that I shall ask myself what you meant later if I don't ask you now. If I asked you the same question of the development, would you give a different answer to help you? Would you say that it was anything more or less than the definition of the development in the application of the planning permission?
Well, without assistance, but I would certainly say that the word 'development' has that much more restricted meaning.
Development has a more restricted meaning?
Yeah.
And here it means what is applied for in the application?
Yes, my lord, and I suppose that the high point of that interpretation of the way in which the learned judge used the term 'development' is at paragraph 110, CB1, page 72, just over the page, where he says, second sentence, indirect effects cover these consequences which are less immediate, but they must nevertheless be effects which the development itself has on the environment.
And you disagree with that?
And I disagree, we disagree with that. I think we suggested that that amounts to an impermissible gloss. We're accused of putting an impermissible gloss on the EIA directive too, by my learned friend, but it's too restrictive an approach in my respectful submission. And it rules out or has the capacity to rule out many, if not all, indirect effects. Right. Sorry, forgive me, my lord. But, my lord, that is the knob of our complaint about Mr. Justice Holgate's decision. And I'm conscious of the time too, but I'm also happy to.
Understand the complaint and how you put it.
But I am happy to answer any further searching questions that any of your lordships have at this point, or perhaps in reply.
Yes.
But can I please then hand over to my learned junior on ground one, Roman numerals three and four? Thank you, my lord.
May it please, your lordships, I will address the court on grounds AG1, 3 and 4. And if I may also just touch on one or two matters that your lordships discussed with my learned friend. Firstly, just to pick up that last bit of discussion because it's relevant to, I think, grounds two and three about what Mr. Justice Holgate understood by the development. And if your lordships look at paragraph 101 on CB1/71, your lordships will see there that four lines from the bottom, when Mr. Justice Holgate defines the true legal test, he doesn't stop by saying that it's whether the effect is an effect on the environment, if it's an effect of the development, but it's of the development for which planning permission is sought. And it's that which then runs through in paragraphs 106, 107 to 110 as limiting and differentiating the way development is understood by Mr. Justice Holgate in his judgment and the way that the word 'development' is used in our submission in the EIA regulations, which is supposed to be akin to the broader understanding of the project. Because what Mr. Justice Holgate does is via looking at the development for which consent is sought, for which planning permission is sought, i.e. the narrow understanding of development.
Does a planning permission in this case authorise the extraction of the hydro gardens?
It does.
It talks about putting up kit to enable the extraction.
Wells, the existing well and then the future, the new future wells. And the purpose of the planning permission is to permit production. And it's differentiated from the previous planning permission, which permitted exploration and then permitted essentially testing of the extent to which the well would operate. And so it is differentiated in that way. It is particularly for extraction. And it is partly that way because of the description, partly that way because of the time period over which the extraction is permitted, for 20 years at least of extraction.
Is it too simplistic to formulate this concept in this way? That the understanding of project for which you contend, which you say is synonymous with development in the directive and regulations is, the development as described in the application materials and its purpose?
Yes. That is a.
Is that too simplistic?
No, it's not too simplistic because, and in fact, that touches exactly upon where I'm going to go with ground little three. Because in my submission, in our submission, the purpose of the development and then the impact of that purpose of the development on the way in which various environmental factors would be engaged with is one of the key focuses of the directive and of the regulations. And indeed, that's one of the reasons that we put so much emphasis on what your lordship said in CAT. And if I may bring the point back to little three, this ground focuses on the judge's conclusion in his paragraph 126, that the scope of the obligation under the EIA regulations does not include the environmental effects of consumers using in locations which are unknown and unrelated to the development site an end product which will be made in a separate facility from materials to be supplied from the development being assessed. And if your lordships turn to that page, your lordships will see actually on the previous page, so that's CB176, on the previous page at CB175, at paragraph 122 of the judgment, the judge comments on a number of cases that were cited to him. the judge comments on a number of cases that were cited to him as being defining the extent of the project. And he says that that's apt, because the determination of the scope of the EIA that may lawfully be required under the regulations is by reference to the extent of the project.
Where does he define the project?
So he does by broad descriptions of what the development is that will be undertaken, i.e. over a number of paragraphs, eighty to eighty-nine, straight to line.
Sorry, eighty-nine?
And eighty to eighty-nine, but he also describes at the very front of the judgment, the nature of the project.
Could I, of course, look at paragraphs sixty-five to sixty-nine, where he goes, describes in detail the planning application consequences? CB one sixty-three to sixty-four.
Thank you.
Yes, and then my learned friend attributes the judge describing the project with setting out the factual background which includes the application, the planning application and what was applied for. And that in fact makes the point that I made at the outset, which is that there's a conflation between the notion of the project and the development as delineated by the consent which is sought and which is required. Going back to one two two, the pausing where I paused, the judge is absolutely correct that the understanding that correctly what the project is, is one determinant, and that's what he says at one two two, understanding the scope of the project is one aspect, one determinant of the scope of EIA. But there is, as my lord or justice Lindblom stated at the outset of my submissions, a further determinant, and that's what CAT makes clear. And your lordships have gone there a number of times today, but it's in on page two eight nine, AB two eight nine of the authorities bundle at paragraph seventy-two, where it states that however the project is defined, the analysis required in the screening process, and I'll come back to that bit of the sentence, may have to embrace a wider consideration of environmental effects. So one may have to look beyond what in fact the project is, to understand its purpose and what the impact of that purpose would be on the factors that are set out in the regulations. And in my submission, this test, if I may, has that as a description of it, or this approach, captures really well the dual focus in the regulations, which your lordships can see. If your lordships turn up again, I know we've been there, but it's helpful, AB forty-four, regulation four, the dual aspect there of what the regulations require. They require identification, description and assessment in an appropriate manner in light of the case, directed indirect significant effects of the proposed development, so that's of the project, on the factors. And then it sets out the factors which include climate. So I paused there just to discuss one aspect, which your lordships raised with my learned friend, which is what is the, essentially the task of the court in this appeal. And there are, in my submission, two potential answers to that. There's one answer, which is that it's clear from the language of the EIA regulations, here in four, one and two, but also in eighteen, three, B and F, and eighteen four, and then in schedule four. It's clear from the language of the EIA as understood in CAT that there is that dual requirement and the limitation of where one gets to understanding what an indirect effect is, is set by the regulations themselves through the words likely and significant effect, words which have already been considered in the authorities. And Bateman looks at both those words, likely and significant.
I'm sorry to go backwards, but can I just go back to this word, development?
Yes.
It doesn't seem to be the subject of any express definition in the regulations. But regulation two two says that if a word is used both in the regulations and the acts, that is to say the Talent Country Planning Act.
Yes.
They have the same meanings.
Yes.
And then regulation two, sub regulation three, says if the same words used in the regulations in the directive, that it has the same meaning as in the directive.
Yes.
So the drafter of these regulations has not used the word project from the directive, has used the word development, which is a phrase, a term defined by the nineteen ninety act.
Yes.
So is there a divergence? I know it wasn't suggested before the judge that there was.
No.
Is there any divergence between the concept of development as used in the regulations on the one hand and the concept of project as used in the directive on the other?
Not if one understands development as the Talent Country Planning Act does in, I'm not going to remember the section, am I?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, yes, in its broad understanding of what is capable of amounting to something for which one might seek permission depending on the circumstances. So that, I think, that squares the circle of any tension if one is understanding development in that broad way, because it would encapsulate, for example, the sorts of development, one's dealing here extractive developments. And it would also encapsulate developments, like I'll draw some analogies a bit later on in my submissions, housing development, the sorts of development in Squire, et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, I'd need to look at section fifty-five again, though I have done recently. That defines what development is, doesn't it?
That defines what development is, but very broadly and not related to a specific application for planning consent in a specific circumstance.
No, well, sorry, maybe cutting across.
And that's the difference.
I hope I'm not cutting across, but I'd just bring us back in the light of my lord's questions to regulation four, which is where you took us. And we noticed the words direct, regulation four, to the direct and indirect significant effects of the proposed development.
Yes.
Of the proposed development.
Yes.
Now, the next stop after reading that might be, well, let's look at the application.
Yes.
That's the proposed development.
Yes.
Is that a wrong approach?
Yes, because it's very clear from the European authorities that the word project is broader than that for which consent is sought. And if there, if there is any tension between the directive and the regulations, then it must be resolved and must still be resolved in favor of the understanding in the directive.
Via mar leasing construction, is that the point?
And project is definitely understood in the directive to be broader than just simply that for which consent is sought.
I'm being very slow, I expect, and forgetting fundamentals. But if you could take us to that in the European authorities, I would be very grateful.
My lord, I will, I might do that if I may after lunch rather than before.
But the proposition.
To get all my ducks in a row.
Forgive me, the proposition is that for the purposes of the European jurisprudence, project is a broader concept or can be than development.
Yeah, than simply development for which consent is sought.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I should have said that.
The only difficulty with this from a learned transport view is the key authorities dealing with the interface between EIA projects and development consent, which is the phrase of the EIA directive on the planning permission, are authorities not before the court cases such as Romley Wells and a series of other cases in which I represented the Secretary of State in the European Court.
I had hoped there might be.
And we were, and there was agreement that there was no failure to transpose the directive.
Well, I noticed that in front of the judge, but since, since we seemed to have homed in on the meaning of the word development, I was looking to see where it was defined.
Well, I have some submissions to make in due course, which I won't prefigure now, but in my, in my respectful submission, there's a clear answer to all of this. But, but if we're going to go down a track which isn't prefigured in the skeleton argument, your lordships are going to have to have more authority on this issue. I'm sorry to raise it, but it seems inevitable, given my learned friend's.
May I? Given the intervention of my learned friend, I do apologize. I too would like to intervene just to draw attention to paragraph ninety-five of the judgment. Better I make that point now, since we do seem to be going down a new track than the two. So that the appellement case is fully clear, if need be. Paragraph ninety-five of the judgment.
Yes, the relevant project, is that authorized to take place by the planning permission?
Yes, it should be noted, but at the bottom of the page previous, it should be noted that the claimant accepts that for the purposes of the twenty seventeen regulations. And that obviously sets the context for the interchangeability of his lordship's use, given the case before him of project and development.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, just to clarify, it's never been the appellement's case that there is a failure to transpose the directive. When one understands properly what the word development means in light of what the word project means. And as my learned friend says, there's a very long line of very well-understood authorities which make that point. And that was never in the appellement's case. Where this has arisen is because of the way the judge uses the type of consent being sought here to define out as not legally capable of assessment certain effects. And that's the difficulty, that's the mischief to which my submissions were addressed.
Yeah.
So I got so far as to say that there are two potential approaches to the task before the court. One is just to look at the language of the directive, look at decisions such as CAT and Bateman, and to say that that makes it abundantly clear that for a project, the entire purpose of which is to extract a fossil fuel, for that fuel to be burnt, where there is scientific understanding of the impact of that on the climate, i.e. the factor, and where there are well-understood methodologies for assessing that impact, then that is a situation in which those downstream emissions or scope three emissions must be considered under the environmental impact assessment regime. There is a second approach, which is, as my lord or justice Lindblom indicated, to seek to look more deeply at the words and then to define a test by which indirect effect as a concept is henceforth to be understood. And it's to that second approach, if the court wishes to undertake that approach, is to that second approach that my learned friend made submissions on the two tests before the court, reasonable foreseeability, proximity, et cetera. Just to say one word before lunch on that, well, maybe two words if I can get them into two minutes. The first word is that there is a danger in importing a private law tort concept into a public law arena, where one is not, as in private law tort claims, trying to understand what an actor who has already acted would have found reasonably foreseeable at a particular point in time in order to limit liability versus in EIA circumstances, the likely significant future effects of a development not yet built, but that have to be understood and assessed in order to understand what the likely impact is of the development on the environment. And so.
Well, the private, sorry, I'm, just to understand, the private law tort concept here is reasonable foreseeability?
There's a number of them, there's proximity, the proximate cause.
Or remoteness.
Remoteness and reasonable foreseeability, all of them float around together, if I may put it broadly, in tort law as limiting the extent of liability.
But I thought you were contending for a formulation that did import
Yes.
this dangerous private law tort.
Well, that will do it in a way that is very clear not to pick up the dangers of, of just applying wholesale the tort concept. And that's why I wanted to clarify that what we are advocating is reasonable foreseeability based on the factual circumstances of the specific case, looking at the nature and purpose of the project, i.e. that's forward-looking.
Just a moment. Reasonable foreseeability based on the specific facts of the case.
Yes.
What was the next bit?
Looking at the nature and purpose of the project in light of the current available scientific knowledge and including any particular environmental factor, so that's that second bit, the factors like climate change, where there is a serious possibility, that's the words of Bateman, a serious possibility, that the project will impact upon that factor. That's the likelihood. It's then a completely separate question whether there's significance to it.
Right, well, on that digestible note, shall we break for lunch?
My lord, thank you, yes.
Two o'clock. Yes, Mr. Lord.
If your lordship will forgive me, I had brought in, because you're going to need to see us in the light of something that was said this morning, the full officer's report, because there are other sections in it which you mainly can see bearing on the subject of this year's.
You've got sufficient copies for everybody, have you?
I have copies for everyone, I'll distribute them to the court after lunch.
Fine, thank you, two o'clock.